Okay, I'm sorry for the late reports. For those who have not yet chatted, I know that the starter meetings will usually be due to the Pledge of Legions. The Pledge of Legions. Good night, to the United States of America, and to all of our children's nations. My nation, my God, the individual, the liberty, and justice for all. Alright, first item on the agenda is, uh, public comments. The strongest? You got another sign option? Ms. Keys?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our public comment section of our agenda this evening. First person that we have up is Beverly Dixon. And Beverly, can you please state your full name and address for the record? And you'll have approximately...
Three minutes.
Three minutes. I will wait when you send when you have about thirty seconds left.
My name is Beverly Dixon. I live at 140 West Cedar Street in Norwalk. Good evening, board members, good evening, everyone here, our NFVP members, glad to see everybody. Uh, I wanted to first off say that NFVP had a very successful first book initiative, which we are all very proud of. And we have made a commitment to our students to provide them with as much help and literacy as possible. When we found out that our kindergarten paraprofessionals were cut, we were very shocked. And it was a bit disappointing. Not a bit, a lot. Our paraprofessionals are also part of our Norwalk students' education. Parents and all NFVP staff at each school are an integral part of the development of our incoming kindergarten students, in all students. It would put the strain on each classroom. The decision to have these positions cut, or put back, I should say, would benefit our district tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm in the middle of trying to solve a problem for the school system. Uh, our next speaker will be, um, Mike Lyons's former teacher many years ago, Heidi Schreiber.
Yes, I'm here again because apparently I haven't changed your mind since the last time I was here. And I've come to speak again about the closure of the Norwalk High School, which I'm very disappointed about. Uh, my son and daughter both, um, had wonderful experiences as very small children before they ever got to Norwalk High. They took lessons and participated in the intramural sports that were there. And I know that when they went to the PF Camp, Tom Crutch's Personal Fulfillment Camp in the summertime, they would either walk over from the local fair and make school or be bused over there so that they would have swimming also. Uh, I know that while they attended Norwalk High School, there were both lessons during the gym classes and they would also play water sports. After school, my daughter was on the Norwalk High School swim team. And during the class day, my son would teach, um, students who did not speak English how to swim in Spanish. And, um, I think it's very disappointing. You may find that I'm repeating myself from the last meeting, but those conditions haven't changed. We live on the water. We have a lot of beaches. I remember when I was very little, Frank Zulo was teaching swimming and he was a lifeguard. I've written to him. And, um, it's such a vital skill. You would not want someone, you would not expect someone to go through adult life and not learn how to drive. That's probably an adult life skill. I feel that in our community especially, it's a life skill to learn how to swim, to know how to swim, to be safe. Uh, we don't have those races anymore that they used to have in Cat's Pester. My friend, one of the Canavars used to participate, people would swim out to Sprite Island. Uh, but back to Norwalk High School, I, the fact that it says on the budget, "The pool will be closed." It's a big facility, a lot of money went into that, a lot of effort. I didn't wear my swim official shirt tonight and some of the laundry, but people were engaged, the parents were engaged to, to help out and participate. It's a wonderful sport, clean sport, you don't even have to shower afterwards unless you want the chlorine after. But it's a, it's a vital thing for every, every child in the community to, at some point before they leave their schooling in Norwalk, to know how to be safe near the water. Um, I know that I've contacted, as I said, Frank Zulo and also Leonard's, and that family is very interested, I know, in water safety for everybody. Uh, my parents used to have a big pool and my kids needed to be safe. That was one of the reasons that they would, um, take lessons. And they were safe there. But, okay, my time's up. Thank you. All right, I hope you have a great time at the beach this summer.
Thank you. Our next speaker, I think it's Eileen, but I'm not sure. Eileen Romeo.
Good evening. My name is Eileen Romeo. I live in North Pass, North Side of Norwalk. Uh, years ago, our paraprofessional jobs were for volunteers, stay-at-home moms. Today, with the economy, there are very few stay-at-home moms. We, as paraprofessionals, are asked to do as much as the teachers and to have just as much knowledge of the material. The times have changed. We need benefits and salary to keep up with the times. Many of our paraprofessionals have second and third jobs to cover their bills. We are very qualified for our jobs. The power protest prove that. We would like to be fairly compensated for all the work we do, to be treated with respect, and not have our jobs eliminated with a swipe of a pen. Thank you.
Our next speaker, our next speaker is Ed Abrams.
Good evening, Ed Abrams, 21 Morgan Avenue in Norwalk. Again, would like to thank the board and the union for getting back to the negotiating table last week and coming to an outcome that we hope will benefit all of the students in Norwalk. Thank you very much for the effort. Really appreciate it. Similarly, we are delighted to see the restoration of key aspects of the budget back in the proposal you've been voting out tonight. One of the things that we did discuss at the last meeting that I did want to take a moment just to clarify was the changes to the pull-out music lesson program. Again, as parents involved in music, we all support an idea that allows for deeper music lessons as well as deeper educational learning. We simply ask that we ensure that the music teachers are part of that discussion, that the parents are part of that discussion, and that that discussion results in a solution that does not disadvantage those who are less privileged in Norwalk from a time, accommodation, or a transportation perspective. We remain willing to work with the board, with Dr. Adamowski, with the music teachers to come to that solution, and we simply ask that we make public the plans that Dr. Adamowski has talked about in this summer to work with the music professionals in order to come to a new proposal so that we can all understand it, support it, and get behind it together. Thank you.
Uh, our next speaker is Brenda Penloims.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Penloims. I reside at 21 Cameron Drive. This has to do with the budget, and I have, um, a, um... Because I am concerned about the budget, and I just want to know a few things. Um, I know that it appeared on Nancy on Norwalk about Mike Lyons being in litigation with Chrissy Fenwood, and I want to know where are we on that and who is paying for that? Because it's coming out the budget, and I want to know how much money is being paid because you have all these cuts, okay? You want to cut the AIDS, you want to do a lot of cutting to bridge, you want to take that principal away. So where else is this money coming for these litigation? And also, there's another litigation in the city. Make sure you get it right, Miss. There's another, Dr. Costanzo and his sexual relationship allegations from New Haven. Don't take my picture. Okay, so where's all this money coming from with these litigations? Okay, we have a lot of people here that need education, but they have some litigation that's going on. So I would like to know where's the money coming from? Thank you.
I'll just answer that question quickly. Uh, the case with Chrissy Fensoor is covered by our insurance, Kirma, and we are not spending any money on Dr. Costanzo, and in fact, Dr. Costanzo has not been in charge of anything. Uh, the suit there is against the City of New Haven and New Haven Public Schools, and I believe they're superintendent. So there's no funding exposure from Norwalk schools. I think that concludes our public comments. I mean, you didn't sign up? Hustle?
My name is John Bosman, at Dean Anderson Avenue. Everyone in the community, they know me. And I came here tonight because I'm a kid, I'm speaking up what I think is right for the community, not only the community but by the country. And I want to say here tonight, I didn't come here to play on your names. Just one of these laws, something. And ACB did say, I'm a total bull, Miss Ross. I want to know why we really pay for y'all getting all these orders, and y'all know that the public know. I spoke about the pool when we were here with the ball. That lady was right. Under the city charter, it said that you need the water for the run. But I understand the pool right quick because I know you got three minutes. Yeah, that they go closing down and put it on the city. Now, the board, if you can put everything on the city, all the laws of the charter, if you put everything on the city, we don't need you, Bull Milner. And I want to say to you, Bull Milner, and I want to be very clear, our ownership contract, I know they keep their energy in the job, which I am bound, you put them up all of that prayer, but I knew the contract. You didn't want to custole. We're about to see those contracts. Where are they? Everything is not secret. And in the papers, it's saying right here, and I want to be very clear, consumer are killing the dog, what the hell, Kevin? Yeah, you know, God, we need, saying, y'all, shepherd time with these orders. Where are these orders reported? What are all those hiding in the secret? Now, I'm in the custodian, I'm thinking for the retired custodians tonight. I get over by fifty, all the poor guys, some of them fifty, eighty years old, confidence they look over, you don't hear this big one tonight. Y'all up there trying to take that benefit from those people. Not only I'm thinking for them, I'm thinking for twenty-two million people in this country. You all see what's going on in Washington? I'm fat crazy, but the woman thought I was the dog. He said, "We have to speak up and stop playing this game. If we don't get that money from, from Washington, the state of Connecticut already, bro, you ain't gonna have no money to take care of these young, single, sister, poor people." I'm concerned about the poor people and all the disabled, but, uh, kids. I had one call me today, calling, said, "What's the matter, my husband there? My little kid can't move." Well, you don't speak for me. I don't speak for them. I don't speak for any people, both black, white, and Spanish there, man. But too hard with the pain, too much apologies. And I'm gonna hit all of you, mother, if y'all keep all this coming up and saying, "You should be standing with your boss." I'm gonna stand up for the poor people. I go to my grave tonight, speaking for the poor people, thinking about working all my life, and y'all supporting me in the street. You only be shaming yourself. All some friends up there, you mistreat me, now tell me to be set up. To get out of the way, y'all was closing down. I suppose what, is this what you get to dumbag? We all trick that one, try to get one away, close down, bring. And I stand behind all of them, I'm gonna say, and you all should stop this getting played. If you want to represent us, I'm gonna tell you right now, we order for you. If you know me, that, that is your fault. Thank you, brother.
Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of 2017 to 18 budget reconciliation and final budget approval. I go to the finance chairman, Mr. Meek.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget as set forth in the packet with the following changes. Uh, change one, restoration of middle school pay and teachers' private music lesson for Change two, restoration of Memorial Day parade tickets, $2,344. Change three, restoration of middle school intramural sports, $125,300. Total restoration of forty-three kindergarten pay and parapositions, $1,227,370. Also, um, restore, uh, the preschool program at Brookside, $41,556. These items are offset by a decrease in projected unemployment expense related to the forty-three positions being restored of $300,000 even, and a reduction in the health insurance overall adjustment related to moving subscribers to the State 2.0 Plan of $1,288,731. That's the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion?
I just want... Sorry. I just want to, um, say thank you to everyone that came to the table to make this happen. I'm pleased with the fact that you're at least looking out for our children, and that's what our first priority should be. And I definitely would thank you, and I hope going with you two to continue this type of, um, language and working together in order to make other areas, improvements in other areas. And I definitely support everyone being at the table. And, um, and, yeah, thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I'm probably impressed with this preschool program, uh, now several budget cycles. And the bottom line is, you know, we are responsible for providing education with K-12 and in certain cases, K-14. But, um, pre-K is very clearly and explicitly set by the state, school readiness slots as being not the responsibility of the public school system. And yet, we do have a program, currently have that program, um, but it is, our resources are limited, the space we have is limited. Um, this is, is not a program we probably should be involved in. Every time we kind of realize that and put in the budget, at the last minute, we have a, a head fake. So, um, I don't know if we should make a motion or not, but I would like to be on the record that we're not going to accept kids, you know, from new kids in that program going forward so that those school readiness slots, which are funded by the state, can be, um, transferred to an entity that is in a position to run them, uh, which is not our core area of operations and financially not an area where we can expend funds, and currently aren't spending funds. So, um, if we have to have a motion to vote, I would like to do so to ensure that we no longer accept any new students and the students we have finish the program, move on to kindergarten, and we get out of this business.
Okay, so, uh, we want to make sure that the people who are applying to the program right now for this fall would not be remotivated. It's this fall, people will ask and ask them to vote.
Exactly. Okay. We accept no additional students other than what we currently accepted for this fall.
Okay, there's a motion. Uh, I think, just letting you put it in context a little bit, the, uh, we are actively working on establishing pre-K programs, but they are generally under the state guidelines to be run through the early childhood council, not Board of Education, but we can cooperate with early childhood. Typically, it is not anticipated, the school system itself would provide that, uh, because frankly, it's fast and very expensive for us to provide it in a sort of early childhood council. We've, we've found ourselves, uh, today with a dilemma in that while I think there's certainly consensus on the board that this is not a long-term model, um, it was, we were unable to establish today that the twenty-six to forty, uh, kids, uh, who would be going into that program this fall would have any alternatives. And so I think the consensus on board was, we didn't want to pull a rug out from one of those families at the last second who had no opportunity to plan. Um, I think that perhaps your motion could be something along the lines of, you know, and the, uh, budget approval to state that after the class, the classes are seated for this fall, uh, no students will be accepted in that program for the fall of, uh, 2018. So that it would be clear that people have a full year of alternative plans, and we wouldn't have another situation where people are stuck in the last decisions.
And I think, yes, I would work and to understand, it's very complicated. It's pre-ski, pre-K slots, which are called school readiness slots. It's incredibly complicated. There are ten-month slots, there are fourteen and twelve-month slots, there are different kinds. The funding all comes from the state, it does not come from us. And, um, you know, uh, the early childhood council is a coalition, a little kind of like Norwalk has in a sense, coalition of providers. Um, and we are part of that because we have a button, and going forwards, we expect to have pre-K classes in our buildings, but that they will not be operated by our local schools, they will be operated by other entities. And, um, so with that model, you know, it's in our strategic plan, specifically have stated what we expect this, uh, to look. Brookside, the setup we have, Brookside does not fit into our long-term plan. And so I think this should be, yes, as your motion said, this should be the last year, and people in that program would have to find, you know, and their little childhood council would have to figure out where those forty slots will be next.
Is there a second? Well, let me give a second versus the topic for discussion. Is there a second? Mr. Meek's second. Okay. Discussion.
Yeah, I, I, I feel that this type of motion right now, without just coming out today, without getting the involvement or input from the public, I, I think it's a dishonest service, a disservice to, to all. I, I can understand some people's points, but we have to realize that we just can't come out here and just start, I'm just saying things, talking into public law. Uh, you know, we will go through the vote today on, on the, um, budget, and then if we want to have further discussions on this, then we can sit here and put it out there on the agenda, let the public know what's going on, and then they could come out and have an opportunity. Because we have to remember this about their children as well. These kids are now our, uh, players, and we need to have them.
Any other comments, Eric? And then Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I do agree with sentiments that Mr. Barbas has shared, um, as far as the sustainability of this program being, um, in the Norwalk public schools offices. However, um, I am not in favor, uh, at this point, of putting in a resolution that it's per man. I do think we need to be very careful about how we report on this. Being unafforded by the pest with the taxation prior to being here, I did have some exposure to the early childhood council and how this readiness slots work, and it is entirely confusing. Um, it's possibly the most confusing piece of any of our budget because of all the different pieces that go into it. So, uh, I want to make it clear, I wouldn't support this motion. However, I am in favor of a continued dialogue to figure out how to better serve these students in a capacity where we aren't put into a situation like we were tonight. Um, I do believe that we should find the best resource for all of our school readiness slots, um, and also find the best way to offer early childhood education to all our students. And right now, since my term on the board so far, this has been a stumbling block, how it's funded, what's happening with the kids, is it equitable, is it the right, and I think that having a good dialogue over this for the next year as a core piece of how we move this board to fit into our strategic operating plan, focus on that, and see how we deal best with this situation in Brookside. That's what I'm in favor of this way. Thanks.
Mike?
I just want to say, you know, I'm sure this is nothing to do with public input, it's the reality of what our financial situation is, and we have limited resources, and we need to figure out where we're going to spend those resources. And our core mission is to educate kids K-12. That is going to change with public input. Uh, we have to decide whether we want to spend our money on this to educate kids and pay all our employees as well as we can.
I think...
And I understand, I know you're a parent as well, I understand Mike's point of view, but I, I believe it gives us a little bit of time to find slots for these children. These two are number twenty-six to forty kids. They're our youngest mothers, they're our most vulnerable children at this point, and we need to make sure we mindless let you have those children.
Another discussion? Uh, Ms. Shaw?
I, I, I understand all that, but we have to realize that these are their children. They need to have some input in their children's lives. I mean, we're up there, that's fine, but I feel very strongly that input from families because they're, they are the ones that know their children better than us. And although they put, put them in our hands, we need to listen to them and get some input and then have a conversation, and let them be part of it because it is their children, and we need to make sure that they are involved. The public is involved.
Any other comments?
My comment is, uh, I'm in favor of support Mr. Meek's, uh, motion. I understand, uh, Mr. Barbas' comments for this, uh, motion, and the comments that are made by Ms. Keys and Mr. Anderson, and, uh, is mostly about tabling, uh, the decision to no longer offer preschool at Brookside. My suggestion is that we move forward with the first motion, Mr. Meek's motion, and we should table Mr. Barbas', uh, motion for another board meeting, and if we should re-vote on it, we should use two separate votes.
Okay, so is that a motion to table? Well, is that a vote?
Yes.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
There's a second. Motion to table is not debatable. We will proceed to a vote. All in favor of tabling, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five. Opposed. Three, motion is tabled. All right. We will add to the main motion by Mr. Meek. Is there a discussion on the main motion on the overall budget? I think...
I just want to personally thank, and I think I have also opened word, um, our paraprofessionals that came out tonight. We appreciate you coming out, but I think we all realize you're really the front line in all of our schools and all they hope, and we really meet with our children every day, so we do appreciate that. And also for any of our people that are out here tonight, also for our music programs. So we realize how important our paraprofessionals, our music programs, and some of our other programs as well. So we thank you very much for coming out tonight.
Any other discussion? Erica?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did want to echo of Miss Key's comments. I do have to say, Ms. Dixon, everybody from your group has been utterly amazing. All of the speakers that have come out to speak on the topics, since we've gone through this difficult reconciliation process, I've been blown away by the passion, the music program, the passion for the paraprofessionals. This is my second budget cycle here on the board, and I can say the board, that's been taxation, while I was serving, there was much quieter, but what I do appreciate is seeing the passion of the public. And, you know, what I do hope is that going forward into next year's budget cycle, we continue to have your presence and your voices heard about how important your programs are early on, because that's one thing I've seen, you know, when we, we start this budget process early, we started in January, so the more input, the more voices we have, the easier it is for us to not be in a situation like we were this evening, you know, finally being able to go back to the table, and I do want to thank the NFT for doing that with us, to come back to a resolution where we were able to restore the vast majority of these paths, and ensure great programming in a number of areas. So, I look forward to seeing you guys more in the near future, especially maybe a little sooner than last year, so we don't have to be so nervous at a time like this, so thank you all very much.
Any other comments? Okay, I just wanted to make a couple of comments myself on the budget first. I also want to thank the leadership of the NFT for meeting with the negotiations committee and being able to work out and mutually agree with the solution to the insurance problem, which has freed up the additional funding and has allowed us to restore the music, restore the kindergarten aids, and various other things that are added back into the budget tonight. With that financial sort of critical aspect of it behind us, and then being able to restore all these elements of the budget, I also wanted to emphasize the fact that this is, even with the some reductions that we need to make here, we are spending more money this year than we did last year, and we are, in fact, pouring a lot of resources into funding the initiatives of our strategic operating plan. This includes increasing the number of teachers and programs at the high schools to try to eliminate their study halls, improving the funding of our inter-district magnets, particularly given they're moving in a direction of choice system, a lot of magnet schools, this is what we're doing, newly constructed K gates are going to be. We're going to pour more resources into tier-two and tier-three interventions that are designed to close the achievement gap. These are all things that are retained in this budget, in addition to the things that we have restored tonight. So I think this is a very positive, forward-looking budget, it does not stand still at all, it's actually moving forward on this operating budget aspect, and of course, on the cabinet budget, the city has agreed to fund a building program in total of one hundred and seven million dollars to build the first new school in Milwaukee since nineteen seventy-one, total rebuilds of two hundred schools and expansion to create two K-gate magnets. So there's a lot of very positive stuff going on in this budget, besides the things that we have been able to restore in the budget tonight, I just want to emphasize those positive things, this is not, you know, it's a standstill, this is a move-forward budget. Any other discussion? All right, Erica, we proceed to a vote, all in favor of Mr. Meek's motion, please indicate. And it's unanimous, the budget is approved. All right, we have the three food service items tonight, we do have a table for a week, in order to allow some board members to get some additional information, which I think has been provided. At this point, the chairman entertained a motion to adopt items two, three, and four, which are the food service consultant recommendations, approval of the company contract amendment, and approval of the budget proposals, there's such a motion. Someone, Mr. Chair, thank you, is there a second? Seconded. Any discussion on that? Erica, we proceed to a vote, all in favor of approving, Mr. Chair? Both, both, yeah.
The last time we came together, there was some concerns about the Whitson overseeing our employees, so I'm not sure if that is further discussion or...
I'm sorry, I have, the echo's bad, I can't hear very good.
But you can hear me. But you can hear as well, you know, if you're Whitson, I believe I brought it last time about Whitson taking over, who's gonna be in charge, or have that, you know, in charge of our employee, of whatever, they said Chef would hire overseeing employees, and I believe that, I believe it was said that Whitson would be like the manager of the work, so I was trying to figure out how that's gonna work, if they're trying to, you know, oversee or manage our, no, public school employees, and they're separate.
Well, just to share our thoughts that the employees remain and will remain, all of the public school employees, based in, and all of their terms of employment, wages, salaries, benefits, working conditions, and so on, are as established in their collective bargaining agreement. The only change here in practice is that the supervisor of those employees will be a Whitson's employee as opposed to a district employee, which was actually the way the contract with Whitsons was always written, we just weren't following the contract as it was written. We had a intermediary who was a district employee that would exercise disciplinary, any disciplinary action was required, it would be exercised by a district employee. In this case, the Whitson's food service director will be the direct supervisor of all of the food service operation and of district's employees, remain district employees. Obviously, the collective bargaining agreement remains in full force of effect. If an agreement is to be heard, it would go through the standard regular process that it always does, and it does now, so it would go through our HR office and so forth, none of that would change. The only change really is the person who is supervising, exercising the supervision over the staff is Whitson's food service director as opposed to a district employee.
Okay.
That, sorry. So that person will be in charge of discipline, putting on whatever, let's say that this Whitson director decided they want to terminate someone, that they go ahead and terminate them, and they still have the right to agree with what's the fact that, will they, is there something in there, will they come to us and tell us, tell us that we're gonna terminate one of your employees or put them on, you know, some kind of discipline action or...
Right, yeah, all the regular, normal HR practices and processes would apply, so the collective bargaining agreement hasn't changed and doesn't change under that scenario, so, you know, if somebody has done something that would warrant termination, obviously the food service director would need to come speak to our HR office about it, and they'd have a discussion about it and so forth before any sort of action was taken. Typically, determine, going immediately, determination is very unusual, would only occur in a, you know, pretty clear-cut kind of case where, you know, somebody was found to be, you know, I don't know, making something up, stealing from the district or something like that, that would be a case where you would expect that to go immediately with termination, but if it's a more, you know, routine kind of matter, you know, it goes through the normal progressive disciplinary process. And again, the contracts remain in full force of effect, and all of our safeguards of employees remain in place.
Erica, one quick question, Mr. Chair. As far as progress in employment, if anybody wanted to take a step up in the food services realm of the schools, what options do they have if the supervisory position is outsourced?
Well, it's not really outsourced, right, they already have a supervisor position, so... Right. The food service director has been outsourced for a long time, probably a decade or more, so this isn't a new change. The change is simply, we, we had a position that was in the district operating budget that when the district outsourced the food management service, it left that position in the budget as a result of the recommendations from the consultant. The consultant had identified that that position was largely redundant, that many of its functions, or most of its functions, in fact, were being carried out by other district, either district employees or by Whitson's food service company employees, so consultant recommended we eliminate that position and use the resources from, that would otherwise have been used for that position to allow us to go follow the executive chef.
Which is an interesting position.
That's a Whitson's position.
That's a Whitson's position.
Yes.
And is that the supervisor position you're discussing right now?
No, let's say that...
It's another position.
This is a, Whitson's would have to be coming from two positions to three positions. Whitson's currently provides a food service director and an assistant director, and under the proposed budget, they would be providing a food service director, assistant director, and executive, and an executive chef, which was recommended by the consultant, and the consultant recommended that those positions all be consolidated under one entity, under Whitson's, and that was essentially because of the issue in terms of having this disjointed management structure was not helpful to the overall management of the service, that we need to have, be able to assign and fix responsibility to, for one operation. When you have a situation where you've got contractor manager and an in-house manager, it doesn't facilitate assigning and fixing responsibility or, or the...
Any other questions, Erica?
I just, I have the same questions, and I can sort of ask them behind the scenes, but I'm just wondering, how typical is a dinner arrangement like this in other school districts where a non-union supervisor is the point is supervising unionized...
It's actually quite, it's not unusual at all, it occurs in many cases. Whitson's does have other school districts where they are serviced by manager and then directly supervise district employees. The most common arrangement would be to contract out the entire food service operation, but based on our current collective bargaining agreement, that's not an option for us at the moment. So, and certainly Whitson's or other providers would be very interested in providing a full contracted-out service, and would be very capable and able to do that, and they would probably, I'm sure they would tell you, that would be their preferred method of operation would be to have all the employees under them, but that's not what's being proposed here. But there are certainly other cases where the food service company for areas outside of food service, where a manager provided by an outside company provides a supervision for, for our employees.
Okay. Any other questions, Erica?
Just to confirm, this is a one-year budget, a one-year contract?
One-year contract, yes. All right, there's no other discussion, proceed to a vote, all in favor of approving these three items, please indicate. Mike? Nope. Okay. Okay, so that's, I give one, two, three, four, five, six, all opposed. Extentions? Two extensions. Okay, six in favor, two extensions, three motions are approved. And the absence of Mr. Semso turns to Erica, for the motion to adjourn. So, second, second, all in favor. Meeting is adjourned.